Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session with the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, March 21st, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the our council chambers. Roll call please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joanie Jacomino is excused. Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mal Soweed is excused. Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Yeah.
City staff, Stephen Hawken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Landers, personnel director, Matt Gurney, public works director, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Jo Estes, city attorney.
Thank you. For tonight, we'll stand, have a moment of silence, and whatever you feel that is important, and then we'll have the pledge of allegiance. So, thank you.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take a little bit of time for myself and make some announcements, one proclamation, and we'll proceed with that. I just wanted to quickly read an email that I got actually from our wonderful person that helps run the senior center, Carol. I think we all know who she is. And we've been doing quite a bit of work out there, and she just wrote to say, "Your guys did a wonderful job, and it looks great. They even got a perfect color mix. I couldn't find a color sample and tore the color out of a magazine, and they were resourceful and helpful and courteous and actually matched it. Plus, they're great workers. They even got the thermostat working again." And so, you know, our senior center's important to us, and this is just one example of what almost all of our employees do, they'll go the extra mile. And honestly, it warms me to know that, you know, they get recognized, and I just wanted to pass that on, that a lot of our guys did a lot of hard work out there to make a sunroom, and it was greatly appreciated by our seniors, so.
Just a comment on the Bisbee Facebook page, are the pictures?
Oh.
Of the finished job.
Oh, cool. Okay. You want to see some? We're going there again, that's even better.
Yeah.
Stop by and take a look. So, with that, I'm going to read a proclamation tonight on our fair housing. We actually had a meeting today at the library on some housing issues, and talked to a lot of people and pushed by a lot of ideas, so. But this is the fair housing proclamation, whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act, and the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 prohibit discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing or land to be used for the construction of housing, or in the provision of brokerage services for the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin. Whereas, the 1968 and 1988 federal housing acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing, and whereas April is traditionally been designated as the fair housing month in the United States, I now therefore, Ken Budge, mayor, city of Bisbee, do proclaim April as fair housing month in the city of Bisbee, and do hereby urge all citizens of this community to comply with the letter and spirit of the fair housing law. Signed by me today. Thank you for that, fair housing, and housing is important to all of us up here on the dais tonight, I know. So, also tonight, we're going to recognize a couple of people for 10 years of hard work at this labor of love. You've got to thank the loving, because the pages don't always match that love, so just so you know that. Anyway, I just have a couple of great plaques to award to both my loyal, it says loyal and dedicated service, but it actually is loyal and dedicated, you know, clerk of me, the one that keeps me on the straight and narrow. And then the other one, which is loyal and dedicated, keeps us on the straight and narrow if it's not getting in financial pooh-haws, so. Anyway, for Carrie and for Ashley, I just want to say, you know, 10 years seems like a lot, but in your lifetime, you'll enjoy the next 10 even more. No, I appreciate you all, and I'm going to, we're going to award these, but I want to give everybody else a chance up here and over there and everywhere to say one or two, if they would like, about our two very important 10-year people here. Anybody have a little?
Well, we certainly couldn't keep the wheels moving the way they did without these two ones.
Yeah, I wrote a little thing that said they're, we're like a big cog, and if one of those little things, wheels on the cog go bad, the whole kind of system starts, and these guys all keep the cogs running, so. I'm sure the city manager would like to say something? Oh, defer to council first.
Yeah. I did.
I just want to say thank you to both of these ladies, and it doesn't seem like it's been 10 years. It hasn't been long, actually. It's come by quick, but, you know, I really appreciate both of them, and I think Carrie has come so far from when she first started, and she's found her voice, and she keeps us out of financial trouble, and I'm really proud of the progress and where you are at today. So, thank you for everything. And Ashley, couldn't do anything without Ashley. I was just telling her in her office this afternoon that if it wasn't for her, we wouldn't, or I wouldn't, I'm speaking for myself here, I wouldn't be able to keep anything straight.
Thank you.
And it doesn't matter what it is that we come up with, or what mess we find ourselves in, she always manages to calm us down, straighten us out, and keep things rolling, and we really couldn't do it without her either.
Thank you.
So, very appreciated.
Thank you.
I'll just say thank you to both of you. All my interactions with both of you have always been professional and completely above board, and I appreciate that so much, and thank you for everything you do.
You're the young one, but you've been around a while now.
I am, and I was thinking that. I'm a new kid on the block. I've been told over and over that I can talk a lot on this, but I'm a new kid on the block, and definitely I did, both of the ladies. I appreciate the fact that you've been here as I have, being introduced to the city's culture, the city of Bisbee, and helped me navigate the, everything to make it work for me, so I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. Again, I can only echo what everybody else has said. I've had the distinct pleasure of being able to work with these two on a daily basis. You know, Ashley, you know, came in while I was here the first time, and then Carrie came in while I was here the first time, but right at the tail end of it, and then I went off to other places and then came back later on. I've seen a good bit of change in the way that these two offices function. All of it has been good and for the better. And despite, you know, for Ashley, changes in things like election law, and for Carrie, our friend Gatsby, who keeps coming back every year with more rules to follow that we scratch our heads and wondered why, but she makes sure that we follow them to the T and managed to survive our annual audits with little must or fuss, so. But I did wonder a little bit when I saw the agenda, because I'm thinking, I started working here in 2006, and both of them beat me to 10 years. But not by much. So, the difference is, is that their time was a lot more consecutive than my time was. It was that seven-year break that, you know, made the difference, so. So, I do appreciate everything you do, both of you. You know, both of you keep the city manager's office on the right track for the most part, and if it isn't, it's not your fault, it's mine. And I look forward to seeing you both for at least another 10.
I have a short 45-minute video of a little montage. You're really the show man. I mean, I'll give you a couple of really great examples. I mean, when we went through this Obama issue with the PSPRS, and how many questions were put towards Carrie, and how she stood up and answered every one, and they literally, and also dealing with Camp Taco and the foundation, you know, that was going to give us money, and all the things that had to come, she just handled it, did it, and no questions asked. Couldn't ask for anything more than that, and, you know, oh, we get another grant, oh, well, that means she has to make another line at him and get trapped with all that, and never heard one peep of, oh, really? So, I mean, to me, that means a lot, and I can't say enough about Ashley. I met her first when she didn't work for the city, and she worked with the.
Title company.
And then I was here when she came on, I was 7.
My first round was '07? Maybe '08?
Well, you have the dates. Come on up. Give me the dates again.
Don't even question me.
You're the official holder of the dates, but anyway. I do remember that she came on as the assistant clerk, and then we became clerks before I left for the first time. I could always go in and close the door behind. I was the council member, so it didn't matter much, but she and I had a couple of really good, you know, behind-the-door things, so I could stay on track.
Maybe what we ought to be keeping track of is how many of us have worked here more than once.
You need competition.
My break was shorter than yours, much shorter.
So, there's our personnel. We're going to do the final.
Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity. I definitely got a few kind words that staff for Ashley and Carrie asked me to read tonight. So, the first for Ashley, this is a significant year for Ashley to celebrate with the city of Bisbee. We want to thank her for being not only a great boss, but an incredible mentor as well. And that's from Nino Williams and Amanda Bramel. And then I have to add, Ashley's devotion to the city of Bisbee knows no bounds. It doesn't matter the day or the time, if called upon, Ashley is there. It's like she removed the word "no" from the city clerk job description. She has strength and poise well beyond her years, very much like a duck on water, always calm on the surface, and paddling like hell underneath. So, thank you so much, Ashley, for all you do and all you give to the Bisbee staff, mayor, council, families, and the kids. And I've got a few for Carrie. Going to express my gratitude for Carrie for the many opportunities she has given me over the years. Lending her knowledge to me has given me the ability to learn the many facets of finance. She demonstrates appreciation for us and is willing to assist us in anything we need. Thank you, Carrie. A great leader makes the job easier. Carrie, it is an honor to have you as the best finance director. I have learned many, many things from you. Congratulations, Carrie, and thank you for being the best boss. Working with you, Carrie, has been such a pleasure. Congratulations on 10 years, cheers to 10 more. And congratulations, Carrie, on this anniversary of work. Best wishes for your dedication to a job well done. You are a great example for all. And I have to, lastly, to add, Carrie is a very special kind of finance director. She balances knowledge, strength, and confidence with gracious humility. She leads and instructs her staff to do their best, and then steps back and lets them take on the challenge. When a teaching moment arises, she focuses on correction in a manner which builds confidence and encourages growth. The city of Bisbee and the community benefit from Carrie's attentiveness, attentiveness, high standards, and humility. So, thank you both very much.
Now, there is going to be a picture, guys.
You know there's going to be a picture, but.
You all colored her, didn't you?
Oh, gee. Look at that. One of them's standing.
Okay, yeah, come on.
Did you call the jumper this morning?
Wow.
It's not often that we get it.
Does that little thing look like a camp?
I can't operate it if it's not.
I know.
It's not hard to operate, I can't do it, so. Anyway, you guys can start smiling just about any time now.
10 more years.
I'd like a nice picture.
That's 10 more minimum.
Who?
Yes.
That one was blurry. There we go.
You want the bag? So, thank you, everyone. We'll just move on now. We have a call to the public. I have three signed up, so. First one, is it Tommy?
No, no, I just can't be there. Was that? We came together.
Oh, the microphone you want to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, come on up.
Okay, so.
Both of you.
Monica Patience, I live on 206 OK Street in Bisbee. And I've been here before, spoken on this issue, but it's kind of been a few years. In the meantime, I moved away from that place, but I couldn't bear the stress of living here. And the person that lives on 205 OK Street, who lives across the street, he has a, he has a garage there, and he, the property line to the garage is 14 inside the garage to the road, but he closes the garage, and then he parks on the street. So, actually, in a way, he's parking in the middle of the road. So, parking in the middle of the road means that if I would park on my side of the road, that anybody could not pass through there, like an ambulance, or a fire truck, or anything, because he is there in the front of his garage, when, so the garage goes four feet, and then he is outside, and he's got to, I got a tenant up there, she was going to come with me here tonight, but she's not here, Rachel Sky, but she's as angry as I was, that I had to move away from there, that I lived for 16 years, and I loved the house, and I liked everything up there. Now, the other person that lives there, Kitty Corner from 206 OK Street, he has several scooters parked permanently on his, on the city property. They are permanent, he covers them up, and they just sit there, and that city property, a person should be able to, and he puts stones around it, and they water, and they plant trees there, and they water it. And I used to throw away those stones and rip up the trees, but it's not good for the neighborhood, so. So, anyhow, he, he is there, and then that's it. I was there before, and I know when Mr. Goni was there, up there painting the railings red, and that's on my side, but they've been, and that other person living up there, she, they took off the paint, and she went back and painted it over again, so.
Thank you. Matt, maybe take a look again up that way and see him deal with the police. Okay, thank you. Steve?
Yeah.
Come on up, let's give you your name, and.
Oh, yeah, it's Steve. Well, hi, I grew up here. I don't see my nose anywhere. I have a couple of messages for you. The reason I'm here is the financial condition of this city. Horrible, isn't it? Isn't it pretty bad?
Nope. No, sir. Absolutely not.
Why do you have to declare a street tax?
No, we can't, we can't, this is called the public, so we can't answer your questions against the law.
Oh, okay. Oh, but I do have a.
Statement.
A bonus for Bisbee.
Okay.
I know how to save your streets, I'm in '94, and I called, I told somebody about it in front of Chris.
I was shaking, couldn't get down.
Anyway, paint your streets going to be good, 100% extra house paint. Might have a little sand in it. You paint once in a while. You said asphalt people's day, it won't stick, so why do you strike? Same thing, same paint. Painted one in '94, was still going to shade with a few more coats of paint than you did. I don't know if you guys understand, but spending on streets isn't going to be good.
Sorry, we can't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't want to be offended.
Yeah. Call the public. If it's not on the agenda, the space is.
Oh, shoot.
We're on our way.
Crap, sorry, guys. They could oversee.
If you don't mind, what I would like you to do is, I'm going to give you my card, and my email address is on the card, and I would like you to send me an email with everything you just said tonight, and then I will respond to you. Okay?
Appreciate it. Listen up. Little new mice, that's just horrible.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Moving on, we'll do general business. First order of general business will be accounts payable. Motion.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $301,271.78.
Have a motion, second to a pay accounts payable. Questions? Anyone have? Okay, I don't have any either. It seemed pretty straightforward this time, so we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $301,271.78. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, so move. Item number two is the approval of the consent agenda. We have a whole bunch of just actually won, which is the approval of the minutes. That's like the first, I think, in all the years I've entered. And so, I don't think anybody wants to vote unless they want to discuss the minutes. Then I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed item A.
Second.
And a motion, second to approve the consent agenda as agenda size. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, so move. All right, we'll move on to old business. Old business, this will be item number three, discussion of possible approval of ordinance O-2304. This is an ordinance of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sanitation code for low-income program. This is the second reading of this. We had it explained to us. Anybody on council has any questions further on this? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance O-23-04, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sanitation code, chapter nine, article 9.1, section 9.1.5, subsection 9.1.5, C3.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve ordinance O-2304. Roll call for ordinance, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion approves, 5-0. Moving on, item four, this is again, the second reading of the approval of ordinance O-2305, ordinance of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sewer code for low-income program. Again, discussed this last time, and why we have, moving forward on changing the rules. Anybody have any discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain another motion.
I move to approve ordinance O-23-05, approving the amendments to the city of Bisbee sewer code, chapter 13, article 13.2, section 13.2.2, subsection 13.2.2, A3, C.
Second.
See, that's why I wanted you to make motion. Thank you, everyone. We have a motion, a second to approve ordinance O-2305. All, roll.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0, so move. Okay, done our new business. This will be the second public hearing on the potential declaration for emergency by the city council in relation to the fiscal year O-22, 2022 expenditure limitation. We, we're going to hold a public hearing now. I'll, we heard the explanation from staff last meeting, and why we're doing this, and very good explanation from our attorney, and how it is legal. So, I'll open this public hearing on the declaration of emergency. I'll ask if anybody's here in the public that would like to speak in favor. Seeing none, I'll ask anybody that would like to speak against this. Do we have any written communication?
No, sir.
Having none. Seeing no public comment and no written communication, I'll close this public hearing and ask if there's any questions from the council before we move on to actually the Seeing none, we'll move on now to item number seven. No, six, I'm sorry, six. This is discussion of possible approval of resolution R-2305, declaration of emergency by the city council in relation to the fiscal year 2022 expenditure limitation. Maybe we should have a quick, in case somebody didn't log in last meeting, the why exactly we're doing this again. Anybody want to give us a quick overview? Either the finance director, or our city attorney, just.
I guess I can jump in and give a quick, two-hour overview of the.
Okay, Carrie?
What's his contract up to? Not soon enough.
All right, so this gave a quick synopsis of, again, this is kind of an accounting, rounding situation.
So, yeah, essentially, this is an accounting mechanism. This has nothing to do with the actual amount of the budget. This has to do with the bonds that the city issued last fiscal year for the payment of the PSPRS pension debt obligations. So, the city took out bonds to fund that long-term debt obligation, and is paying those bonds off over a period of 20 years. But according to the auditors, the payment is considered a lump sum charged towards that fiscal year's budget expenditure, because the home rule that the city operates under didn't provide for an exclusion of long-term debt obligations, which is an exclusion that's allowed for under the Constitution. But according to the auditors, the payment uh is considered a a lump sum charged towards that fiscal year's budget expenditure because the home rule that the city operates under didn't provide for an exclusion of long-term debt obligations, which is an exclusion that's allowed for under the constitution. Um but because we're operating under a home rule, they look at the language of the city's home rule uh resolution. So in order to rectify that expenditure issue, it's a two-step process where um we we hold the the public hearings. The council would declare an emergency acknowledging that that expenditure uh excess expenditure and then we would then reduce the following fiscal year's budget by the amount of that excess. So it's it's just a it's a mathematical equation, which is why I try not to get involved with that.
It's an auditor thing.
It's an auditor thing. So what this resolution does is acknowledges uh what what occurred, declares the emergency and allows for the reduction of expenditures in fiscal year and the current fiscal year for that amount that was deemed an excess last year, which is the just over fourteen million dollar amount.
The plan was we weren't gonna quite push that bond so fast as interest rates rose, we decided to pull the trigger quickly. And I'm glad we did because we see where they've gone, so um it kinda put us in this uh we didn't think we were in a situation until the auditors, you know, and I'll leave that at that, so. Um I'll entertain a motion if there's any other discussion from council first. Seeing none.
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-three dash zero five, declaration of emergency by the city council in relation to the fiscal year uh twenty twenty-two expenditure limitation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution under a declaration of emergency of R dash twenty-three oh five. The twenty twenty-two expenditure limitation. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on, this will be item seven. This is discussion of possible approval of a recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund the grant application for the best kept secret of Bisbee submitted by Ms. Rita, an amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission. Councilmember Johns, do you want?
Sure. So this should say Rhythms of Bisbee, the name change.
Oh.
And this is actually the show that's going on right now at Central School. It was, it started uh last weekend and it's gonna be going again this weekend. And Rita's shows are always really well attended and the Arts Commission is all about involving the community and she's got a lot of dancers from different parts of the community. So the five hundred dollars is just gonna go to, it's all in the packet, just toward paying the performers and um other setup costs. And that's it.
Okay, we have a great Arts Commission. We knew that from the event they put on for us, so I think they're making wise decisions. Uh any other comments or discussion?
I don't have any. I know this is appropriate, but it is an incredible game of footballs. If you have an opportunity to see it.
Absolutely. Good videos. Yeah. You can make a motion and you can say.
Okay. I move to approve the funding of the grant application for, I'm gonna say Rhythms of Bisbee submitted by Ms. Rita Barry in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission fund.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the five hundred dollar grant from the Bisbee Arts Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, so move. Thank you. Moving on, number eight. This will be discussion of possible approval of the contract with R I C H O for a sixty-month finance purchase of new printer copier for the Copper Queen Library. Our library director. Um make us believe.
Uh so we've been uh we've had a contract with Rico for as long as I've been at the library and our current contract is up, so we want to um keep ahead with a new contract and the the one change that we have is um that we wanna add the smart integration uh technology to the printer and that just enables patrons to come in with their phones, their tablets, their laptops. They can print uh directly to the printer from their own device. So it's just a it it it's a really nice uh book to have. We have a lot of people coming in and honestly, one thing, you know, we if they log into the public computers, they have to remember their password to their email that they're constantly logged into on their phone. So this just makes things a lot easier. So I thi- I think it's a really good service to add.
Your uh usage is probably on up since one of our copies ended, it's closed, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we're doing really good. I think this will help.
Well, it's it's a public service. We don't make a lot of money on it, but it's
It's a great public service. Uh we we have a lot of people that um honestly, they they they'd be heading to service.
I didn't read the whole contract, but it's longer than that, but. Anybody else?
I just wanna add to that.
Sure.
I was gonna say the same thing since the office supply shut down here. It is a very necessary service that you can buy and I have used it and it is safe and strict staples, so I appreciate it very much.
That that word gets out more, you'll probably wear this one out even sooner. It comes with service, right?
Yes, it does.
Yeah. Any other comments? Motion?
I I move to approve the contract with Rico for a sixty-month finance purchase of a new printer copier for the Copper Queen Library.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the contract with Rico for sixty-month uh purchase agreement. Uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, so move. Thank you. You bet. Thanks, Jason. Moving on, item nine. This is a discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six. This is amending the City of Bisbee code, chapter six, animals. Article six point one, animals in general adopting a new subsection six point one point one eight. Unlocked will sell, public sale of animals for the purpose of regulating the sale of animals. This was uh something I asked for to bring before you all. Been my I was made aware of this and looked around and what's happening is sometimes at Saturday market, other people come to sell puppies or or other type of animals. Um I've seen it down in Old Bisbee and I'll be honest, I don't think they have their shots. They haven't really necessarily been taken care of and I think it's not the way we as a city want to promote the uh property for the sale of of animals that haven't necessarily um been taken care of, so I this is not something out of the ordinary. I absolutely actually copied it almost out of I had the city attorney, I gave him a copy from the one from Sierra Vista they've had in place for over fifteen years. And uh other cities, I've talked to other areas and they said, oh yeah, we don't allow that in our cities, so I just thought this would be a good addition. So I'm here to answer any questions or if you have something with the attorney, how it's written. Or happy to entertain.
How would you, how would you enforce this?
Well, actually, our city animal control officer actually came to me and or not came to me, but I got through to him through back channels that he would like to enforce this. He shows up, but he has no method and under our ordinances to to be able to do this, so it would be him that would be the major person.
And I'll just point out that this language is also the same language that's in state statute, but it is only applicable to uh state statute requires this for, I think it's municipalities of over twenty-five thousand population. There was a a bill to amend that to require this for all municipalities throughout the state. Um but that didn't go through, so it's still a municipal by municipal uh
Decision.
Decision. But it is the the same language as what's in state statute, what's in Sierra Vista and other municipalities that have adopted ordinance like this.
So again, we're reading the pack for small towns. Any other comments or questions? Well, maybe I should say one for tonight. So I move to approve the ordinance of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six, amending the City of Bisbee code, chapter six, animals, article six point one, animals in general adopting a new subsection six point one point one eight, unlocked public sale of animals.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve uh notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six. Have a roll call?
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes six uh five to zero. Uh last may uh number ten. This is discussion of possible approval to participate in five newly proposed national opioid opioid settlements with Tiva, Gentlemen, A, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart. City attorney. Seems like we've done that down this road before.
We've been down this road before and these settlement agreements are subject to the one Arizona agreement that we uh executed a little over a year ago with the first round of settlements and we were expecting additional settlements. Because there are a number of national uh opioid litigation cases. Uh these cases kind of known, as you can tell, mostly with the uh pharmaceutical dis- distribution of the opioids. The first set were with regard to the actual um manufacturers, so they're going after many uh you know, large companies that benefited from the the over prescription of opioid uh medications. Um so this is another five uh five rounds. I I was asked in one of my other municipalities, you know, why all this litigation? Um and essentially, it started because the the manufacturers were aware of how addictive the opioids were, but they hid that information. Encouraged doctors to prescribe it, doctors prescribed it, and then they were aware of substantial over prescribing of the medication and didn't do anything to curb that. Examples of that were you have small, small communities of, you know, a thousand people and the the local pharmacy would be processing or or distributing a hundred thousand opioid pills on a monthly basis type thing, so it was it was a very you could definitely tell that there there was issues there. Um this also kinda ties into the the fentanyl crisis that we're having because so many people are are taking pills that they think are o- opioids for pain or for whatever reason they're taking them and they're wasted with fentanyl and they're being poisoned and dying from that, so it has a substantial impact on on the communities throughout the country. Um again, these funds are restricted use funds, just like the other settlement funds. They have to be used for opioid-related uh programs, whether that be the purchase of Narcan, training of officers, training of uh fire department, um drug rehabilitation programs, different things like that, but it's it's sounds like large numbers because they are large numbers, but realize they are they are paid out over a period of time. Uh I think this round between ten and fifteen years. Um and based off of our current calculations, you know, it's all based off of how many municipalities and and counties participate. The city should be looking at receiving approximately a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars over that period of time. So I will tell you, the total out of the previous settlements combined with these, it would take us up to a total of approximately three hundred thousand dollars for the city paid out over a period of ten to twenty years, so it's not a a huge amount every year, but it is uh enough to uh you know, to help offset some of those costs and expenses. I will tell you that 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 portion of what that is what the city's portion of what goes to the state of Arizona, which was just under one billion dollars out of all these settlements, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. So it it will have a an impact throughout the the state, not just with the this. So this is just to authorize the the city manager to uh sign these additional uh settlement agreements so we can participate in those funds. It is a settlement agreement, a contract of adhesion. You take it or leave it. Uh you can't make changes to it. Uh so it is what it is, but we we get funds if we sign them, we don't get funds if we don't.
We're not gonna sue them on our own. But like when you think about how many calls our police and fire go on this and what they have to do, um we're not even breaking even, so anyway, it's it's a it's something, so. Um any questions, comments? Uh entertain a motion?
I move to participate in the five new proposed national opioid settlements for Tiva, Allegra, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve um the national opioid settlement that will participate in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, so move. On the last uh order of business is to be for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things this evening. Um uh number one, I just wanted to give a a brief report with no real uh detail in it. Uh we had a meeting this morning uh with the uh local uh postmaster uh of the Old Bisbee Post Office, uh Mr. Estes, Mr. Gurney and the mayor and myself. Uh the the topic of the meeting, of course, was uh keeping the doors unlocked long enough for people to be able to get to the box at a reasonable time of day. I can report at this point that the meeting went actually pretty well and uh they understood um the uh issue at hand and uh the there was some comment that nobody had said anything to her, even though all of us have been hearing quite a bit of chatter. Um and and uh it at one point yesterday, I was talking to somebody related to this topic who uh thought we ought to uh, you know, step up the effort to let the post office know how we felt, but uh I'm thinking that uh that uh Matt's gonna do uh some investigation of of a different kind of security system for the building. Um and we're gonna also uh look at uh getting some camera stuff in there so that we can also monitor inside twenty-four seven. If uh wh- once Matt gets his um chopping done, if you will, and gets the package put together, we'll present it to the postmaster and then she'll take it upstairs to her boss and hopefully uh they'll agree to uh keep the building open for uh box holders uh for a more reasonable uh number of hours for the day. I'm hoping uh that we're talking weeks now instead of months. Uh and this is, I think, I think we'll all agree, this is a a a positive step forward resolving an issue that's been kind of dogging us now for a couple of years and we need to do something about, so. So hopefully in the next council meeting or two, uh we'll be able to give you a a final report of steps that have been taken to open the post office boxes for more hours. The other item I have is just a reminder, uh our annual strategy meeting is next Monday. Um and that includes um all of the members of council and all of the department heads. And uh we uh we did the same thing almost exactly a year ago, uh I I think with very positive results. Uh as we prepare for the next meeting and you should have received a um uh an agenda today by email uh for that meeting. Uh a lot of it is is covering the same ground that we covered. Um in in last year's meeting, the only difference is we'll be able to show results. Um now, uh we still have time. If there's something on your mind that you think ought to be on that agenda, please let Ashley know by Thursday, okay? So that if we have to add any items to the agenda, we can do so. Still get it out lawfully. And uh and other than that, we'll be glad to see. I think it'll be an interesting discussion. Once again, much needed. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, and just to add to the post office, realize it won't be a twenty-four seven, but it would be late enough that, um, that definitely you could get to your mail and, uh, and that would be a help, very helpful. Also, I'm gonna ask, I've been asked that we do a little more, a little better on keeping those four spots in front of the post office, oh, turning over constantly. So, um, we're doing some additional enforcement on that as it is and we're gonna get out some new signings, so just, uh, we wanna make that a, a, a much more, uh, usable place, because we all have to go there, we live in a world one, so. Alright, with that, I'll, uh, take a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjournings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.